Good evening, everyone. Evelyn, roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wolf.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
President Diaz-Locum.
Present. Moving on to item 4.2, reporting out of closed session for November 16th, item which was item 3.1, public employed discipline dismissal and release. We received information and gave direction to staff. Item 3.2, conference with labor negotiators. We received information, no action was taken. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending our meeting this evening. If you are, if you would like to speak to the board, please complete a card if you are here in person, if you are at home, please complete the Google Doc form. Si necesitas traducción tenemos a Gonzalo aquí presente esta noche. Y si estás en casa, por favor puedes llamar al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el número de la tecla del número. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak to the board. Si quieres hablar con nosotros, te daremos tres minutos. Y si necesitas traducción, es el total de seis minutos. If you would like to speak on items that are on the consent item, please let us know because we vote on those simultaneously and we don't discuss them. And let's see here. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I forgot to ask in advance, but can we move 12.3, the measure you, the tapped measure you, to consent and 12.5, the personnel changes? Yeah.
I was also wondering about 12.4, does that make it day on?
I think it doesn't.
So.
Okay.
Moving 12.3, 12.4, and 12.5 to consent.
Now that you had any questions.
12.3.
12.3, 12.4, and 12.5 are moving to consent. Any other changes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to oral communication, 8.1. Evelyn, do we have any cards or speakers?
Yes, we have two speaker cards. One of them is general comment and the other one will be on item 11.2 under consent. 11.2 under consent item.
11.2.
You call the first one under general comments.
Marcelina Luna.
Good evening. My name is Marcelina Luna and I'm here to advocate for Hoover School. We need a lot of help in the buzz loading zones. Day after day that I'm there volunteering, I see cars parked there where the bus has to stop in the middle of the street on Stan Ball and the kids have to get out on the street and cross in between the cars to get into the sidewalk. Also, we need more help with crossguards. There's only one paid crossguard around Hoover and there's a lot of children that walk and families that walk. So I'm here to ask for additional support. There's three of us that volunteer as crosswalk duty and there's only one paid crossguard that's on Stan Ball as well. I did work with the city on improving the conditions of our crosswalks. They were very faded, signs were missing. So they painted all along Charter Street, Stan Ball. The pedestrian bridge was in really poor condition. The first time I walked it, six months ago, there was human feces on there, urine. It was awful. The six lights were out. Public Works went and replaced them two weeks ago. It took us six months to get that done. With the kids leaving the after-school programs between 5:30 and 6:00, it's not very safe. So I'm asking for more support on that. Whether it's you reaching out to the city. I've been working with also parks and rec. The soccer fields are left dirty. There's trash. The kids have to be out there exercising during their activities and there's trash, there's litter, there's people inside the soccer fields that should not be there. Gates are left unlocked and open. I have found that on several mornings where I go in and check and our children should not have to be in those environments. So I'm just here to advocate and ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this evening and speaking to us and bringing some of these issues to our attention.
I'm sorry, if you could send me an email, I am happy to talk to some of the city council members to get some attention to that area. So I wrote down some notes, but if you don't mind just highlighting an email to me.
I did. I am in collaboration with a council member, Stanosta Garnica.
Okay.
And we did a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't have too much conversation, but I did want to just let you know, if you want to email me, I'm happy to follow up a little bit on that.
And I am happy that Councilmember Garnica is working with you all. Something to add to our two by two by two. Oh, okay, so we do meet periodically with the city council representatives and the council, the council, the board members from Sequoia High School. So we do bring some of these issues up and we will continue to do so. But thank you very much for coming and speaking with us this evening. Moving on to item nine, bond program consent items. Can I have a motion to move them?
No motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion items. Item 10.1, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 4030.
Thank you. We're bringing a series of board policies and potentially ARs for you to review tonight. This is a first reading. The Board Policy Committee met recently and there are a few of these policies that are focused around a recent US Supreme Court decision regarding an activity that occurred with a football coach outside of California in regards to an employee's free exercise and free speech rights. So the first one that we have for you tonight, Board Policy 4030, is a recent update. We, the board recently reviewed this policy, but this particular one comes up often. So are there any questions regarding this? Thank you for reviewing them in advance. That's appreciated.
Any comments or questions? No? Hearing none. Moving on to 10.2, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 4118.
So along those same lines, in this particular one, it also references the free speech rights of our employees and how that pertains in the disciplinary process that is currently in effect. Are there any questions regarding this one?
Hearing none, we'll move on to 10.3, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 4119.14219.14319.2.
And this particular policy is still along the same lines regarding the free speech and also the protection of a employee who might be advocating for a student's ability to have free speech as well under ed code.
No comments or questions? Then move on to 10.4, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 4216.
So this particular policy is new, although we have worked within the aspects of ed code as listed here regarding the classified personnel specifically. There's one for classified and one for certificated and how these individuals have evaluations and their probationary period. This policy particularly references a full-time or part-time district police officer, which we currently don't have in employment, but we decided as a committee it would be wise to leave it in because in the future that may change or we may seek other supports in that arena.
That was really my only question around it was, are we, is something changing here that we're preparing for, but thank you for answering that in advance that this just happened to come up on the CSBA kind of plan and so that we're taking it on?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay, moving on to 10.5, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 4218.
And once again, in regards to the case that occurred about free speech, this particular policy addresses classified employees and their ability to support students and their free speech or within the disciplinary guidelines of our current CBAs under ed code.
Yeah, and I'll say about this one and the one before, which was for the certificated that it's, you know, I get that we're expanding, you know, we're adhering to the case and expanding the the personal rights there too, but I was very glad to see in there, and I'm sure this came from CSBA, that there's no, that as long as it's not coercion, right? That it can't be used for coercion. So it's protecting everybody's rights in that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yes, that's a good point. That was important.
Okay, moving on to the consent items with the exception of 11.2.
One more.
And this one actually.
Sorry about that. 10.6, first reading and discussion of Board Bylaws 9100.
Yeah, so the Board Policy Committee would like us to have a discussion here tonight regarding this particular board policy. We did review it and felt pretty comfortable with it. And then Trustee McAvoy had noticed one item that she just wanted to bring to the attention and have the conversations. Do you want to take the lead on this then, Lisa?
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. So just before the board meeting started, I sent out an email with the language that I'll read, but Maria and Mike, particularly if you want to look at that, it might be helpful. But so what happened is, you know, what we're trying to do with this and what gets tricky for our region or our district is we don't elect officers, we do a rotation, right? And so how to explain what our practice is? So our board, our policy committee met. We were comfortable with the language and then overnight I got to thinking about it some more and trying to make it clearer so you can tell me if this is clear or not. And this is first reading, so in the second reading, if you're comfortable with it, we could just add it and then approve it. So, okay, I'm just going to take this off, just while I talk for a minute. So basically on page two, so actually first of all, let me ask, did you have any other questions on this policy before I, okay, because unfortunately I didn't get this out soon enough. So on page two, if you go to second to the last paragraph, where we're talking about how we do our rotation, in reading it, it actually wasn't entirely clear, like if you were just a new person coming into it. So I was trying to make it clear. So this is, I'll just read what I have. "At the annual organizational meeting, the Board of Education shall rotate so that each assumes the next higher position in the Office of Rotation Order." Example, "The outgoing president," that's in position one, "shall become the liaison to the California School Boards Association, CSBA, and the San Mateo County School Boards Association, SMCSBA, in the fifth position, until that position is filled by a newly elected board member." "The board member who was liaison to the CSBA and SMCSBA V, the fifth position, or the president I, in the case of a newly elected board member, becomes the governing board representative to the San Mateo County on school district organization, that's the fourth position. The clerk III becomes vice president. The vice president becomes president. If there are more than one newly elected or appointed board members, the rotation continues per instructions below until all the spots are filled. Incumbent board members and reelected incumbent board members shall move within the board rotation into the highest ranking position. Newly elected or appointed board members shall occupy the remaining empty positions based on their ranking in the election vote tallies." And if you look at what I put, some of that language was already there, but I was adding a few things to clarify it. And unfortunately, even when I read it, it's still confusing. So I think it would be helpful if the two of you and even Cecilia look at it. And I guess what we'd like to do is come back with a, we'd like to approve it at the next meeting if we can. So I guess if you have concerns or comments on it, maybe you could just get to Wendy because we have to be careful of the Brown Act. So if you could just get your comments to Wendy if you're not comfortable or if you have any ideas. And Janet, I don't know if you want to add anything. Yeah. It, because what we're trying to do is just talk about how we do it, but then it, you know, it changes with an elected or appointed anyway, so.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, what you're trying to say is the president moves to position five or four, depending upon if there's an elected member, right?
And it could even be, and it could even be three or two.
Depending if there's more, right, yeah, okay.
So that's what I'm trying to say. And if I haven't said, and I realize when I'm saying it out loud, it's even more confusing. But if you read it and think about it, the numbers kind of help. And I didn't read all the numbers when I was doing it, but. Yeah.
All right, you need maybe a little graphic because it's a little confusing.
Yeah.
And again, if you are, if there's no election, then for the new people that are coming in, if they're, you know, if it's not contested, then
Right.
I think that's the only question I had. How are you going to decide who takes?
Yeah, well, we have newly, right. Right, they'll occupy the remaining empty positions based on their ranking in the election vote tallies. But now, you're right, now we have district, oh, that's what you just said.
Yes.
Okay, you're right, so we actually have to revise that because that doesn't work anymore.
No.
Because they're all different, right, you're right, Maria.
Cecilia didn't run and whoever ran was uncontested.
Yeah.
There would be.
Right, and this hasn't been that much finished because we haven't had a lot of changeover, but we could, and you know, and so.
Right, so I think that's the only piece that needs to be worked on and I think
Okay.
to make it easier.
Maybe it's just by
Graphic.
By lottery. I think that's what we would do, right?
Okay.
We could just say that. I think, don't you think that's how we'd have to do it? Okay. All right, so we'll add that, try to get it right for the second reading.
Yeah.
Feel free after you see it, if you have any additional word smithing, you know, send that to Wendy and then we can even as a policy committee, take a quick look at it just so we can try it because we'd like to get it done before December 14th, which means we need to approve it at the, I mean, it's not that critical because it is our practice, but. Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Now we can move on to without 11.2, so can I have a motion to move those items?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now to action items, starting with 11.2, Recommendation Regarding Acceptance of Redwood City Teachers Association Sunshine Proposal.
Brian Kegel.
Good evening. I'm Brian Kegel, PE teacher at North Star Academy and RCTA Negotiations Chair. This is Erin Washburn, District Music Teacher and RCTA President. RCTA has submitted our sunshine proposal in preparation of a new round of contract negotiations with the district. RCTA is opening Articles One, Term of Contract, Three, Work Year, Four, Working Hours, Five, Leave of Absence, Six, Compensation, Including Appendix G, Eight, Class Size, 14, Teacher Safety and Teaching Conditions. I'd like to thank the administration for leading our district successfully through some difficult times. Not only were we faced with the surprise of COVID-19, but also with the spiraling effect of declining enrollment. R C S D now sits with a never-before-imagined reserve of funds. We are hopeful that the district will agree with RCTA that not only can you continue to improve the salaries of teachers, but make some other long-awaited improvements that will help teachers and students, such as more equitable prep times among Redwood City schools and improved teacher-to-student ratios. Thank you.
Hello. Erin Washburn, Day Then Pronouns, R C S D Middle School Music Teacher and Redwood City Teachers Association President. And I just want to add that our proposal is a multi-year plan aimed at recruiting and retaining the very best educators for our students here in Redwood City. And we look forward to working with the administration. Thank you.
And thank you for coming to speak to us this evening. With that, can I have a motion to move this item?
Yeah, I would also just like to say thank you very much for coming. Really appreciate having the two of you here tonight. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I'll say thanks for coming tonight too. It's good from hearing, from hearing from both of you. Appreciate you having, taking the time to come down and address us. That was great. And I'll second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to 12.1, Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Resolution 18, Authorizing Electronic Meetings of the Board of Trustees During the States of Emergency. Well, we all know what that is.
I think this is the last time for us to do this because as of January 1, it changes. So I will bring that information back to you prior to, probably at our December 14th meeting, if not sooner, the one prior about the changes so that we have them, you know, written. Okay? We go, basically go back to what it was. Yeah, right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now to 12.2, Recommendation Regarding Approval of Schools, School Plans for Student Achievement, this famous SIPSES. And before we start, I just want to say thank you to all the principals and everybody that met to get this done. It's always a lot of work and Liz for putting it all together, but I do appreciate how much time the principals and staff takes to put this and getting it to us. So.
So Ms. Wolf is going to show us a brief presentation using a slide deck. As you know, these are very cumbersome tasks to do, these SIPSES. And I know there's a lot of information there and we know we sent them to you and it probably wasn't enough time for you to really get down and really read them. And we had some great questions and we still continue to get questions. And we have trustee-elect David Weekly out in the audience and so we will be meeting with him, sent you an email about a meeting so they can better understand because David had some really great questions. And once we have the meeting, it'll be with Ms. Wolf, Ms. Wolf and her team and myself will share those questions with you also. So it's really good to go back and to refresh our minds why we have the SIPSES when they were put in place and the reasons for them. And I know the principals put a lot of time and work into them and even meeting with a few parents this afternoon, they expressed how much time they spent on them and were really surprised with, you know, what the outcome was. So with that, Liz, I will turn this portion over to you. And then we do have, all our administrators are on as, yeah, they're attendees, they're all here.
So you can hear me. So I also want to extend great thanks to all of the site administrators who are with us virtually, maybe not in the room, but I saw them and they're all in the audience. And I know that they're feeling a sense of relief that they've gotten this written, but they're anticipating going forward and thinking about how to answer any questions that you might have as well. So as John said, we're going to do a quick historical review of why we have the SIPSES and how the state regulations and the federal regulations have come together in this lovely thing that we call a school site plan. And so this all starts with, they've been going on for several years, but what we see now is the connection between the local control funding formula, the LCFF, which is the state guidelines, and ESSA, right, which is the federal guidelines and how these come together and what the requirements are in the SIPSES that you've just read. So the local control funding formula, again, as you are well aware, began several years ago and has its implementation through the LCAP, right? And so as you look at the SIPSES, you'll see the connection between the LCAP goals and the school site goals because we see them as a confluence of plans. And so, as you know, the LCFF requires some state priorities, requires some particular focus on our unduplicated pupils that we call them as well as metrics. And so all of that you see reflected in our current site plans. And if I can advance this. There we go. As you know, also the LCAP is our district's three-year plan, which is renewed annually. And this year, we will be writing our last year for the three-year plan and it will begin again the following year. But the goals, actions, and services that are in our current LCAP, you will also see reflected in the site plans because again, the connection between our district vision and then what is happening at the school sites. Both of these plans, the LCAP and the Single Plan for Student Achievement, are developed with stakeholders. In our case, it's a large committee and in the case of the school sites, it's a school site council. So that's the little bit of the state information. And meanwhile, in Washington, the Every Student Succeeds Act was being developed back in 2015, which replaced the No Child Left Behind Act. And concurrently, our ESSA State Plan was approved in 2018, all of which again resulting in what the current site plan regulations are. And really specifically, the Title I schools are the schools who are operating school-wide programs are the ones that are required to write the school site plan. But we have asked all of our schools to write them in order to be able to ascertain what their goals and actions are and how they're spending their funding. So the development of these plans are based on a needs assessment and this is why you'll see the analysis of the data in the site plans and the information particularly focusing on our, the academic achievement of our unduplicated pupils, our students who are at a greater need of high-quality instruction and focus to ensure that they are not failing or that they are not at risk of failing so that they are able to be successful in our challenging state standards. Some of this wording comes from the state documents. It sounds a little stulted. So the plans are to include these strategies and we'll talk a little bit about those in just a second and then how these strategies provide these opportunities for students to be successful. These plans are meant to strengthen the academic program at each school and again, in alignment with our district goals and our actions and services, how they're providing increased learning time and supporting the enriched and accelerated curriculum and while addressing the needs of the students who are at risk of not meeting the state standards. And then Assembly Bill 716 was passed in 2018 that aligned these two concurrent. that aligned these two concurrent actions that was happening with the state, with the LCFF. It was happening with the federal government, with ESSA, brought these together in Assembly Bill 716. And so that required that these two components be brought together in a single plan where we show the needs assessment, again, there's a lot of this is repetitive, and that we do an analysis of the data, which is meant to focus on the state data, which as you know, for the past couple of years, hasn't been a full set of data. And we'll talk about that in a second. But also may include local data, which is why you see the i-ready in there. So this SIPSA development is meant to, again, to set out the goals to improve student outcomes, to make sure that the practices taking place at the school sites are evidence-based and then provides clarity around the budget and how that, the budget and the funding is being spent on the needs and the actions and the services. So in 2122, the first round of these SIPSSs came forward that were aligned with our new LCAP. And so those SIPSSs from last year did not have all of the components of the state data because there wasn't state data. And so this last year, we removed the CASP charts and any reference to the California dashboard because it didn't exist. And so this current year, not only are the schools building on the LCAP goals from last year and adding to their actions and their services, but you will see that the CASP data has been added back to the SIPSSs because we had CASP data from last spring. Going forward, next year, not only will you see all of this continue with year three of how we're meeting our LCAP goals, but the California dashboard will also be added back into the SIPSA because it is coming out again this year in December on a limited basis. And we'll talk about that when it comes out in December because it's only giving you data. It's not giving you growth information. So it's just a status data. So there's not the colors and all that stuff that the dashboard used to be. But that will be coming and we will be importing that information into the SIPSA next year as well. So the development process for this year to support our principals in writing their SIPSSs along with their site councils is they received what we called their planning cheat sheets. And so we provided these for each school separate from the SIPSSs, so they had something to work with. And so these cheat sheets provided them with their updated data. And so some of the data that they received was from last spring. So it was their year's data and that would be their suspension data, chronic absenteeism, reclassification data, and it was also their CASP results. And so we provided that information to them so that they could see that and set targets for the end of this year. And we provided fall data for this year, which was their i-ready data for them to set targets for this year. So some data that you're looking at is last year's data and some data that is in the SIPSA is this fall's data, the more recent data. We didn't give suspension data from this year, chronic absenteeism from this year because we'd only had a month and a half of school when they were writing them, right? But they had taken the i-ready. And so then we also provided them with the list of actions and services that were new to their schools that were funded by the LCAP. Because as you remember, not only did we focus our LCAP on our high-priority schools, but we also had some carryover that we were able to add some additional actions and services to each school site. And so those schools were provided with that information to make sure that they included that in their SIPSA. And you will see those items in there and it'll just say district-funded or LCAP-funded. And we provided them, actually, part of this was a worksheet for them to also kind of think through their actions and services that they're going to add this year as well that were funded by the school sites. And then updated budget information was provided to each site. And so all of this information on these cheat sheets was then transferred to the SIPSA document that was taken to the site council for approval.
And can I ask, did the principals take that data and they're the ones who input it into the?
No, we input.
Oh, you input it in?
Well, we sent the charts to DT, Document Tracking Services, and they actually made the charts and inputted the data. But we, we did the original charts for them.
Gotcha.
So our next steps with this, after they've been approved, is that we know that you have questions about specific schools and we would like to provide those opportunities for little, kind of mini study sessions with some school sites and probably two or three at each board meeting, where the site admin will present information based on the questions that you have around the SIPSA, giving you more time to kind of digest them and think about them and provide me with any questions that you have that you would like to have them answer. And then we will come up with a kind of a common format for each of the schools to provide this information so that, and the principals will be here in person to talk to you, but they will come prepared to answer your questions and do a presentation that's focused on what you want to know about the sites. And then other questions that come up could be also answered at that time. I think in the past, when schools did presentations, there may not have been a, and I don't know for sure because I wasn't here at that time, but there may not have been a complete focus on their site plan in some of their presentations. It was kind of like an amazing display of technological skills. But what we want to really provide you with is that opportunity to hear more specifically about what are those actions and services that are being directed for their students in their schools that are based on their goals.
Another thing for you to consider while you're thinking about that is looking at the data because the data is there. You'll be seeing, they'll be taking the i-ready again in December, correct?
The week after, starting the week after Thanksgiving.
Week after Thanksgiving. So we'll have, we'll get you that data also so that you could have it prior to these meetings and the, and the site administrators will also have it. So if you, you'll see where we are right now and then where are we in December? And has there been growth? Is there, has there been? Is there no growth? And what is happening? So?
So we'll provide the comparison data.
Exactly. Perfect, perfect. So those are questions that we have informed our site administrators that we want them to look at their actions, what they're doing, is it working? Is it not working? If it isn't, then what, you know, what are we going to change and what are we going to do differently? So we're hoping at probably about two, I think, two schools per meeting. I don't know if we'll get to three, depending on what's on the, the rest of the agenda. But definitely two. And then so we can have a really good conversation with each of the school sites. It's not going to be like, for those that were on the board before, remember, it was, they were very long and they were definitely different types of presentations, shall I say? We want to calm that down and focus specifically on instruction and where we're leading and what kids are doing.
And sorry, when did you say you wanted to start that?
We're starting January.
So it sounds like what you're saying is in lieu of the kind of bigger presentations that we'd have, we're just going to focus in on the SIPSSs and that sort of thing. Okay.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
I think about the SIPSSs in general. And we, and like I said, we do have the, all site administrators are here.
Yeah, okay. I mean, first, we have to start with thank you to the principals, ed services, the teachers, staff, and parents and community members that are on the school site councils and the English learner advisory committees. They're all part of the process to be able to put these things together. And they're, you know, these are, these are tremendous documents. There's a lot of fun things that are in there, lots of things that aren't fun. But you know, it's a good, it's a good description of what's going on at the schools. And I'm really looking forward to being able to deep dive a little bit with how they're working out, you know, following these plans in January. So I'm glad that we're putting that in there. You know, we have to acknowledge that the test scores aren't where we want them to be. You know, that pandemic had hit test scores nationwide. You know, we'd be remiss not to acknowledge that. We do, we know that the test scores were improving year over year, you know, in the teens prior to the pandemic. You know, and that we were progressing to it. So we're hopeful, right, that those kind of things. And hope's not a plan, these are. So it's nice to have that in place, that we'll be able to see that kind of achievement coming again. The test scores also do continue to show kind of the inequitable outcomes due to like social demographic factors that really shouldn't be correlated to performance. But there are a lot of interventions in here that, that we can see that I think are really powerful. And, and some of the things that I'd be really interested to hear from the sites are, I mean, there are a lot of partnerships that we have, some that I didn't even realize were going on, that sound really, you know, sound like they could have a lot of effect. Even our, even the partnerships that we knew are spending time during the day in the school, like the Boys and Girls Club. I didn't realize that they were tutoring out sites and being that mentor during the day. So there's, there's a, there's a lot of, yeah, there's just, there's a lot going on and a lot of groups that are coming in. You know, it's the takes a village, right? It really does. And so I really liked seeing that. There were some that just blew my mind where they're bringing in counseling or maybe they're focused on, I mean, obviously, we're, we're doing the mental health counseling, but there's additional support and mentoring for the students. So that was really good to see. I think that the, one of the things that we're going to want to look at, you know, and maybe as we get more data, we'll find out what is working or what isn't. But I think we're always going to be asking like, what could we be doing differently? So that we can get back to that kind of year-over-year growth. I mean, the test scores aren't going to become amazing overnight, right? We have to accept that. We want to see growth, right? We want to see year-over-year growth and that continued progression that we had in the teens. You know, we, we know that like right now, we're kind of in a special situation. We do have a lot of extra funding that's going to go away. But we want to make sure that we're using it judiciously and deliberately. And, and so like, we should be looking and saying like, are we, or is that being right? We know we have staffing challenges. Like, I'm pretty convinced that if we could get every position filled, we'd know what to do with them. But it's hard right now to be able to get all of that staffing into place. So that's, that's probably pretty good. And then I think it was even just last week, right, when we were talking about empowered learners. You know, we were talking about a bit of how there's a challenge of getting PD time and how that's changed. And you know, is that something, like, is that something that has to be done differently here? One of, the last thing I'm going to put in there is that I really like this adoption of MTSS. It makes it really clear where we're doing things for, you know, where we're pushing students to, this is what our general output is for it versus we're doing an intervention at tier two or tier three. The more I see that adopted in there, that focus on, okay, can we get the data, that feedback loop that's going through? I, I enjoy that part of the system, that framework, I guess, is what we called it. It's a system without a frame, the bike that's disassembled is the picture that I'm always going to remember. It's supposed to be the assembled bike, but that, that feedback loop, that focus on, hey, how do we get more students into tier one so that our tier two and tier three can be the really exceptional cases and we can really deal with those students? And when you see that in the SIPSSs, we see it in the LCAP, you know, this is tier one, this is tier two, this is tier three. It sort of gives us this common language of, okay, I understand what this is for, who it's for, how it's helping and what it's supporting. So I like the MTSS part coming through. So again, I really appreciate the plans, looking forward to the deep dives. There's definitely, I think that's probably the best place to really dig into some of the specific questions so that it'll be, those will be great in January.
Hey, Lisa or Janet, who wants to go next?
Yeah, I don't want to repeat everything that Mike said. I always appreciate Mike going first because I feel like he says everything I'm going to say anyway. But thank you to the principals and the staff and the parents and Liz and your staff, everybody who's worked on these SIPSSs. I know it's a ton of work and I really appreciate all the information that's in there. A couple of thoughts I had going through them. Number one, the absentee rates is really alarming. And I don't know what's going on there, but we know that when the students aren't in the classroom, they're not learning. So that's going to impact, of course, their test scores and their learning. So I don't know, I don't know what's going on there. I don't know, you know, if parents are keeping kids home because they're sick, but the, the change in absentee rates is huge. And so I think that's something we need to focus on. Obviously, the test scores, we know that the pandemic has, has hit us hard. When my oldest was in kindergarten, it was before I was on the board, but I remember having conversations with people that I was saying, I think, you know, based on what I know about the district already, by the time Caleb is in eighth grade, we're going to be seeing huge gains in our test scores. We're going to see a different district. And I was right, but the pandemic hit when he was in sixth grade. He's, he's a freshman at high school now. We were seeing gains and gains every year and then the pandemic hit and, and the students just didn't make gains. They didn't necessarily slide back, but they weren't gaining. And so the, over those two years, they just stayed where they were. I believe that now that we're back in mostly normal times, we're going to be seeing those changes again because the district was doing things right. And so, you know, I'm hoping that as we continue, we'll see that growth. And then my question, and just in general, something for, I think, principals to think about, coming back to us in January and whatnot. We do have a ton of partnerships, like Mike was saying, and we really rely on them. And I'm just wondering if there are any partnerships that aren't necessarily effective, that money could be best put somewhere else. It's great to have so much help, but if it's not improving or not helping, maybe we need to focus something else. So I'm really looking forward to having school reports coming back. I think there's a lot more that we can talk about and questions that we can have answered when, when we have those. So thank you. I'm excited for those. Thank you for bringing it back.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much, Liz, and your team and the principals and the site councils who worked on these. It is tremendous. And I really enjoyed reading them the last few days. And I know how long it took me to read them and digest them. So I can only imagine how much effort it took to, you know, all the data that you put together to give them and then just all the work that was done. So really, thank you. And I, and I do hope that these will be useful, as you were saying, Dr. Baker, that really we need to be looking at them, checking in, see what's working, what's not working, how are we making improvements? I'm going to try not to repeat too much of what Mike and Janet said, but I did want to call out the chronic absentee because that really jumped out at me. And, you know, we used to have quite a focus in our district on that many years ago. And it's, and I know, I mean, this was at the board level. We even had things like we had gotten some donations of some really, you know, technology and stuff. And we did raffles if students came to school. Like, it was really like a district-led effort. And so I do see in the SIPSSs, there's a lot of work being done at school sites. I know Antonio does a lot of work. But I just wanted to say, you know, please let the board know and the superintendent, like, how could, you know, is there more that we could be doing to call attention to this important issue? Because like Janet said, if kids are not in, in school or in the classroom, they're just getting further behind. And some of our kids cannot afford to miss a day of learning. And it's one thing if they're sick, but I, it doesn't, that, it seems like there's more going on than that. I agree with you. So I would really like for us to dig deep on that. That just seems like top-level importance to me. Because I feel like that will help a lot of other things, right? I also was wondering in the SIPSSs, what I didn't see called out, although I think the state says it's important. When we talk about unduplicated students, we, we have, we didn't, we didn't show comparisons with the students who are receiving free and reduced lunch. We did for special ed and we did for homeless and for ELL. But we didn't for, for that. And I do think that's important because I think that's an element. Because that to me is an opportu, a lot of times that's the big oppo, that's, that can be a big opportunity gap when you have families with high wealth and those with lower wealth in terms of the experiences and opportunities that some of those kids are getting. So I don't know if there's a way to do that easily and whether it's in the SIPSSs. It doesn't necessarily have to go in the SIPSSs because we're going to prove them tonight, hopefully. But maybe in the conversations we have, if that data could be included, that would be helpful to me. Because I also think that will, like I said, with the opportunity gap, I think, and, and I did see in the SIPSSs, there's a lot of things that are helping with that opportunity gap, like the enrichment, the field trips, the, you know, some of that, that really important, high-level creativity and critical thinking was there. So I think it's there, but we just didn't see the data. Yeah. I did want to just point out, because when you look through the budgets, just how important Measure U dollars are. And I wanted to thank our community for voting in that parcel tax back in 2016. Super important. I believe that goes through about 2030. And it's huge. I mean, that's a big part of a lot of those budgets in terms of really important work being done. And, you know, everything from reading resource, I wrote down a bunch of the stuff that was being, you know, mental health, technology, professional development, some of the field some of the field trips, the outdoor ed, you know, a lot of that stuff is being spent, social, emotional, health, a lot of that's being measure used, so really important. Um, also, I wanted to thank the PTO, PTA, PTO and RCF funds because those are also filling an important gap. And then, of course, we had the LCFF district-funded and outside donations from foundations and individuals in Title I. So again, when you start to see where the budget's coming from, it also gives you a sense of what different school sites are having and if there are inequities in terms of monies coming in. So I think that's an important thing that we can look at and think about as we move forward. And I know you've really, you know, we've tried to address some of those inequities in funding through the LCAP. And I think we have done a really good job the last couple of years with that. Yeah. And let's see. I was mostly trying to just call out some of the kind of themes that I saw. I, I have a lot of, you know, ideas and comments and stuff individually to school sites, which I didn't even send because I thought a lot of that would be better done with a conversation because more I just, you know, it was just sort of clarifying questions or aha moments when I looked at them. Let me just see if there was anything. Oh, I did wanna say, yeah, I did wanna call out suspension rates. Very pleased to see those have gone down. Now, of course, we were looking at last year's data, so hopefully that holds true for this year. But I did notice, you know, a number of the school sites are doing restorative justice. Trying to think which school site was doing Saturday school in, um, for part of their restorative justice. So they were keeping kids in the classroom, um, not suspending them, but then having them come in for a Saturday restorative justice. And I'm sorry, I, I have it down in my school, which one, which school that was. But I, I was really happy to see that we're, um, again, when we suspend kids and they go home, they're not in the classroom. So it goes back to that same thing we talked about earlier. So I really like seeing those alternatives to suspension and restorative justice sorts of practices. Uh, also, I really like to see, you know, the culturally relevant curriculum um, being mentioned, a lot of the NUA at school sites, SEAL at school sites, as Mike said, the MTS and the PBIS, that's all good. So anyway, lots of really good actions in the SIPs. So I really, I really appreciate, you know, administrators who are on the call tonight. Thank you so much for all that you're doing and for the, for the information. Okay.
Well, I think my colleagues cover most of it. I just wanna say, having sat here and read throughout the years, all of these reports, this one by far has been the easiest. It had a wonderful summary for us, which we haven't had in the past. And they used to be like fifty-plus pages, if I recall correctly. And it was all just written, which I know was just a lot of work for the staff. And it left me with a lot of questions. Um, one of the things I always look at during this report is thinking of Mike's comment, what can we take from one site that's working well? And um, put it at another place as well. And as Elisa mentioned, a lot of the programs and positions that are funded are funded through the PTAs, PTOs, grants and other fundings. I think the one thing when you guys have the smaller conversations, parents always wanna know like, well, what's the district funding? So, uh, in the SIPs, it, you know, one side may have a count, what is it, something 100? What is that? So that they understand those a little more. But I really like the fact that they're aligned with the LCAP. And they have just a lot of wonderful interventions and programs for children. I know that you're gonna change the presentation of the school reports, but one thing I would like you all to remember to keep in, and that is the joy of learning. Whether you bring it in a presentation, or perhaps now that the students can come back, perhaps we can have them come and give that reading of the poem or have them play that special music piece that they have. That to me was always really enjoyable and touching. And it gave us a, a sense of the students and what they're learning. So anyway, I think most of the other stuff has been covered. Again, many thanks for all the hours you all put into this. And I'm glad that you're gonna have those smaller conversations and keep your eye on the ball. And, you know, this is a time when things are tough. It's a, a time to look and figure out how to do things differently. It's an opportunity. So, um, this is great. This is the chance to move that ball forward a little more, a little faster, because Janet said it takes forever sometimes. And we were in that right trajectory. So thank you, everybody. And I don't have any more questions. John?
So I too am looking forward to the presentations and we'll be working closely with the principals to get that started in January. And then that's another time for us to have a good conversation with each of the school sites and moving forward. So, and I'm really looking forward to the next group of I-ready scores, just to see, you know, from the time we took them in the fall, well, that we're still in the fall, but at the beginning of the school year to where we are right now, see if there's been growth. If there hasn't been, then let's look, see what's, what's happening, why, you know. So, um, I too, uh, am with you about if it's not working, let's see what we have to do differently. And, uh, really, uh, ask our, our principals and our staff, you know, let us know if something is not working well in the classroom, we need to hear about it. Principals need to let us know, and which, which they do, which they do. But also, you know, the staff, when we do have these reports, staff members do come with the principals when they're here presenting. And so do some of the parents, as we did in the past. I think we can get more people out here. I think we're in a different climate right now. And even though if we have to be masked, I think it'd be fine to have the presentations just done by the principals, but also with staff members and with parents. Because parents, um, as I learned today with a group, you know, they had a lot of information that they, uh, had given to their site and to their teachers, and it's reflected in the SIPSA. And they work very closely with the staff and with the administrator to move the SIPSA forward. So, um, stay tuned. We'll be ready for that first meeting in January to move forward.
I don't, I don't know if we specifically talked about this because I was looking back at my notes about themes. The one other theme is that, um, you know, our English learners and our newcomers who are also English learners, it's pretty clear through the data that they have a very difficult time, of course, on the I-ready or the CAS, which makes sense because they're learning the language. So I do think any of the interventions, um, which I actually really don't like that word, but any of the extra sort of opportunities that we can give our English learners, you know, we, in there, you did see a lot of extra positions and focus on specific time for learning the language. But it's pretty clear that, and we've talked about this before, which is why I wanted to bring it up by, as part of the SIPs, is how important it is, if we can reclassify those students sooner, then they're going to be more successful. And we know that. And again, we had a big push on that, you know, pre-pandemic for a few years. And we got a lot of kids reclassified, remember? And those, and then we looked at that data and those kids were doing better. So, um, I do think, you know, I, I did see focus in the SIPs, so I'm not saying it's not a, it's not a negative. It was just an aha that, again, kind of up there with chronic absenteeism, our English learners to really get them as reading as quickly as, as possible. And, you know, we know that it can take up to five years, but it's, but some of the kids do reclassify within a couple of years. So probably those are the ones who had preschool with us, so they actually already had a couple of years. But anyhow, um, yeah, and I'm seeing a lot of heads nod. So, so I would like to have that conversation when we talk school sites.
I do, I just, I agree that it is so important and I'm super glad that it's gold number two in our LCAP. The CRL is making progress on the LCAP at one to one and a half levels every year. And so I, I think it really is important and I'm glad that we're giving it that focus as well.
And, and we continue to be part of the Stanford group that works on ELs and along with their long-term English learners. And, um, we probably should bring probably Amy and her group, Amy Gernstein from the Gardner Center, so that you can listen to, uh, the research that they have done, you know, on Redwood City. Of course, they not only work with Redwood City, they work with Ravenswood. And then, of course, our other districts that have very few ELs. So it's a different ballgame there compared to us in Ravenswood. So, uh, that will also, we can play into the scenario of, you know, what we need to do differently with our ELs and what we need to do in the area of reclassification, in the area of professional development for our teachers and even for our parents.
Yeah, you know, and I think, you know, the pandemic years where we had Zoom learning, virtual learning, that was hard for all students and staff, but it was really hard for our English learners, right? Really hard for them. And so that's, that's acknowledged in the data that we see, right? It's evident there. So I agree with you, Janet. You, you had said we were making a lot of progress and I, I know we can do it, particularly since we're back in person and everybody's working hard at it. Yep. So thank you to all the school sites. You guys are working so hard. Really appreciate you.
Yes, they're all here. Thank you so much for being here, guys. I'll see you tomorrow at 2:30, I think.
Okay, and with that, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Moving on to board reports and superintendent reports. Elisa, you wanna start us off?
Been a week. I did want to say, you know, a few of us went to a panel that was organized by Jessica Shade and her, what, what is the name of her committee, the official name? Food and nutrition and healthy meals and that sort of thing. Anyway, they had a panel, which I think many of us were there, benefits and challenges of going self-op. And, um, it was really interesting to hear from some of the other uh, districts in terms of what they're doing. So there was a lot learned there. And I'm sure there'll be future conversations that'll come up in the committee, the, the food committee that I do not sit on, but I was happy to be like, listen to the panel. And then I, I had my last CSBA finance meeting as chair. So I've been on that committee the last four years and chair the last couple of years. So, uh, had my last one this week, so that was good. And our finances look really good with CSBA. You'll be happy to know that. And then, and because of course, they support all of us, which is why that's important. And then I think that's actually, that's, that's really all I need to report. There was one more here, but no, that's it. Oh, I, no, I did one, one other thing. So I am giving a workshop at CSBA. I will let, I think, uh, Dr. Baker and David, you guys are going, so I'll let you know about it. But it's actually, um, around climate action. And, um, we're gonna have a few school districts and, uh, the work that I've been doing with the nonprofit. So it's, it's actually a little bit different than my board work, but it's all related. So that'll be a workshop on, um, climate action plans. So I've been prepping for that.
Mike?
Yeah, the only thing I have to report was the, um, benefits and challenges of going self-op panel.
Um, we had a workforce housing committee meeting last week, so Elisa and Dr. Baker. That's, yeah, yeah, that's all.
And all I have to report is I've been emailing two of our council members regarding the Hoover safety issue and, um, received, uh, kind of a copy and paste from the report they received from the, the police chief. So Dr. Baker and I will continue to work on that. And sure, and I've been, um, just talking to parents and students. Today I spoke to, um, first grader who loves to read and she told me she could read books like the teenagers. So I asked, oh, what school that you are, are at? And she said, well, I go to Roosevelt. I said, oh, wow. You know, I'm quite familiar with that. I might see you around. Say hello to Tina. And she said, oh, you know, the principal? So I really enjoy those conversations with our students. So that's all I have. John?
Uh, yes, I had a, I, I visited Taft yesterday and, and spent a few hours with, uh, you students and also with Anna Hadera. And it was great to see, uh, gosh, that new building just makes such a difference, doesn't it, when you're there? And, you know, we talk about, you have the new and then you have the existing. Be nice if it were just all done. But, uh, great things happening. Uh, Anna does have her hands full and is definitely in and out of the classrooms. And we were act- actually, she took me to a classroom, uh, where, um, Stephanie Rome from NUA was working with one of the teachers, one of the third grade teachers and, and doing, uh, work around writing and looking at the word, the definition of impulse. Really interesting. And English language learners in the classroom, plus newcomers who are in the classroom too, and they're all participating. It's really great to see. Uh, and then, um, continued with the, uh, meeting with the San Mateo County Off- Office of Ed, along with, uh, San Mateo County Health. That all has to do with that grant that's coming to the county office of education where, um, it's ourselves, our CSD, South San Francisco and the county office of bed. There are millions and millions of dollars that are gonna trickle down over the years. And we're the first group of this grant. And ours, uh, deals with the mental health piece. And they're using, um, data that we've received, not only through the projects through Stanford, but also the projects through the county op, through San Mateo County Health and also through the, um, information received from our school sites. So it looks like we're in the running and we're all done with the writing of the grant. We're just going through the small pieces that were needed in regard to, uh, staffing and costs. And then the other piece being, um, if we go the direction of the Wellner Center, where will that be? And I said I didn't have an answer on that yet. I did not have an answer. So that's not part, that's not, that does not have to be input and input into the grant. It just has to say that that's what the next step is if we get the grant, what would, where would it be, what would it look like? And this is just the planning, after the planning grant, because the planning grant, we would get Redwood City, if it goes through River City School District, we get forty percent of it. There's a small percentage that go to the county and South San Francisco would get another, what, it's getting forty-something? And then there's another percentage that's left for additional pieces, which probably will come to Redwood City. Because if we need to turn a classroom into like an office, that money would go for that. So those are the pieces that we worked around yesterday. And then I'll have one more meeting with them the week of December 5th, and then it's turned into the county, the county turns it into the state. And fingers crossed, we should, we should, there should be no issues getting it. I wanna thank, you know, Anna Paula. She has been amazing during that time with, with the assistance, uh, from her and getting that, the information that was needed and all the work that not only our own mental health people that we hired are doing, but also are the outside people that come in from the healthcare funding, the people from One Life, the people from Star Vista. And then she compiled the information from the people that, um, are funding the additional resources at our three base sites, three base site schools, RCF is funding them. So getting all that data from them. So that made a huge help in us going in the direction to receive the funding.
Sorry, moving on to fourteen point one, information on changes to administrative regulation, forty-one sixty-one point five, forty-two sixty-one point five, forty-three sixty-one point five, military leave.
Any questions? I just wanted to point out, this was a new administrative regulation. And though the board doesn't typically approve, it's good information to have.
The board doesn't typically approve, it's good information to have, should this come to fruition. And it does align with our CBAs, our collective bargaining agreements with our union, so information only. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I might just mention that the policy committee, we often look at administrative regulations. And if they're attached to a board policy, you guys see those. But sometimes we see some that are not, but this one seemed important enough that we wanted just to make it public, so that's why it's here.
Fourteen point two, information on Semitip County Investment Fund. Any questions or comments? Moving on to fifteen point one correspondence. There was the email from Chris. What's his name, last name, Robel? You didn't get one?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's more. Any other correspondence this week? No, okay. The only other correspondence I have is the. From Theater Works, which has. Matinees for students for ten dollars a ticket. And then if they can't make the those matinees, you can get tickets for five dollars, which I thought is a good opportunity for our students. So I send it to Dr. Baker and introduce them. And then another one that I might send to Liz is the Red Cross and Preparing Students. They have a program called the Pillow Program or something like that, Pillow Case. And another one about Pedro, which is for younger children. But again, is in case of emergencies, you know, we do have earthquakes and there have been fires. And so that may be something more for the after school programs if they're around. That's all I have. Let's see, sixteen point one. Possible other business or suggested items for future agendas.
I have one coming up. And it actually will change our meeting calendar, so. Where there's a closed session that's needed December fifteenth. I know I've talked to a couple of board members about this, and being that our new trustee elect is in the audience. This work, this has to do with workforce housing and meeting with. Definitely some consultants that we've been working with, and we need to make some decisions. Prior to returning from the winter holiday. So my proposal is to have it. This session for a couple hours on December fifteenth in during the day in the morning. So I'm asking, is nine, I think nine thirty was fine, and, okay, David said it's fine, Elisa and Janet. Perfect. Okay. So we will have. Cecilia was fine. She, we talked about it yesterday. Talked about it yesterday. So I will contact Peter Ingram tomorrow morning and and let him know that nine thirty. Here.
So that's the only change then, right?
The only change.
So seventeen point one, I guess that would be the change to it.
Right, that's changed.
And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Hi, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, Carlos, for taking care of our technical needs. Thank you to the teachers for coming and to Magdalena as well for coming to speak to us this evening. Have a good evening.